I'd like to call this meeting to order. Ms. Byram, may I have your call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Dawson?
Here.
Mrs. Harrington?
Here.
Mrs. Quinton?
Here.
Mr. Rickett?
Here.
Madam Chair, the Clerk certifies the presence of a quorum.
Thank you. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, ma'am. One adjustment was a recommendation to remove item seven. Ms. Quinton, I was just speaking, and I believe that would be something that could be discussed at a different time, so.
May I have a motion?
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Moving on to recognitions, I'd first like to start off by recognizing a longstanding member of the Orange County Public Schools, Warren Widmeyer. Started here in 1965. He passed away on Friday, the 24th of May. Couple of things about him: he was a teacher, a principal, a supervisor of special education, and an assistant superintendent. If you would all wouldn't mind, I'd like to have a moment of silence for him in recognition of his service to our community. Thank you all. Over to you, Dr. Hornick.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. We will begin this evening. We have a few recognitions of importance, and I'd like to start this evening. Mr. Sedano and Ms. Ronbacher here from Locust Grove Middle School, and we are really happy to, the board approved the appointment of Ms. Rosio Rhodes at our last board meeting, and she is here this evening. So, Mr. Sedano, Ms. Ronbacher, if you would bring Rosio, we come here maybe in front of the backdrop. I'm going to read a little bit about her, and we're excited to welcome her to Orange County. So, Mrs. Rose is a dedicated educator with a wealth of experience and deep commitment to student success. She began her academic journey at Florida International in Miami, where she earned her bachelor's. She furthered her education with a master's in reading education from St. Leo University in Tampa, Florida, and has also finished her master's degree in education leadership from George Mason University. With over 10 years of experience in education, Ms. Rose has held a variety of roles, ranging from elementary classroom teacher to middle school administrator. Her career includes positions as a mentor, department chair, English Language Learner Program dean, and a student support advisor, among many others. Most recently, she has been an integral part of particularly the middle schools at Loudoun County, where she continues to make a significant impact. Rosio's personal life is centered around her loving family, which includes her husband and three children. Her oldest child is in elementary school, while the two youngest are in preschool. Very, very good. As a family, they enjoy outdoor activities, riding ATVs, and most importantly, traveling together to discover new places. Having grown up in Miami, Ms. Rhodes is fluent in both English and Spanish. She is a firm believer in the power of multilingualism, viewing it as a superpower that opens doors to cultures and opportunities. Her passion for education and her dedication for fostering a love of learning in her students make her an exceptional educator and leader, and is part of the reason we are happy to welcome her here. Asked to give a quote about joining Locust Grove Middle School as our newest assistant principal, Rosio says, quote, "I'm thrilled to join the Mustangs and collaborate with the exceptional team." Well said on that one, led by Mr. Sedano and Ms. Ronbacher. Together, we share a vision that every student has the potential to achieve high standards. She is excited to bring her passion and experience to this vibrant community, working alongside all of the dedicated educators at Locust Grove Middle School, who are committed to fostering a supportive and inspiring learning environment. So, it is with great pleasure that we would like to welcome Ms. Rosio Rhodes as our newest assistant principal to Locust Grove Middle School. Please join me in welcoming her. Rosio, welcome. Thank you for coming to Orange. We look forward to having you, and you definitely fell into a wonderful spot, and you're under very good hands, capable hands, of Mr. Sedano and Ms. Ronbacher, so welcome, congratulations. Next, I'd like to invite Ms. Dawson to come forward. We have to get her to double time here. We have a very special recognition this evening. We have a host of staff members who have perfect attendance for this entire school year, and this is across all classifications, and we are privileged to have them here this evening, many of them here this evening. And so, Yvonne, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Dr. Hornick, members of the board, tonight we come together to celebrate an extraordinary achievement: perfect attendance. In a world where commitment often wavers, your dedication shines bright day in and day out. You have shown up, not just physically, but with an unwavering spirit to support our students and uphold the values of our school. Your presence, your commitment, and your hard work have not gone unnoticed. Tonight, we honor those among us who have achieved perfect attendance. It's more than just a record. It's a testament to your reliability, your professionalism, and your dedication to the noble cause of education. Through illness and adversity, you've stood strong, ensuring that our students receive the education they deserve. Your commitment serves as an inspiration to us all, reminding us of the importance of consistency and reliability in our roles. You are the backbone of our school community, and your presence enriches the lives of those around you. Let us not only celebrate your perfect attendance, but also express our gratitude for the invaluable contribution you make to our school community each and every day. Congratulations to each of you, and thank you for your unwavering commitment. So, I've broken them down. So, we have our building-level support staff. Let me get these out and make sure I have them in order. So, I have Dolores Walton. She is our food service manager for Gordon Barber Elementary School. Is she here? Sherri Custos, food service manager for Lightfoot Elementary School. And Brenda Brown, food service worker for Orange County High School. Our next group are our wonderful transportation department, and I would like to recognize Phyllis Anderson, our bus driver. Ms. Nancy Farber, bus driver. Ms. Martha Johnson, she serves in two roles as a bus monitor and car driver. Jackie Kidd, our bus driver. I have Brandon Mally, who is a bus driver, and Jewel O'Donnell, who is a bus driver. I don't believe either one were able to come tonight. And last, but certainly not least, we have our teachers who have perfect attendance. I have Adrielle Ford, teacher for Locust Grove Middle School. Mr. Andrew McWilliams, who is a teacher at Locust Grove Middle and Prospect Heights Middle School. Mr. Rick Schaefer, teacher of Locust Grove Middle School. Stephen Aruda, library media specialist for Locust Grove Primary. Mr. Sully, teacher for Locust Grove Primary. Well, I know this one's here. Tracy Munger, teacher for Orange County High School. Thank you.
Before I get started, is Ms. Hayes or Ms. Himes here? Well, with their absence, it's still important to recognize them, and we're going to go ahead and do that. So, it's with great pleasure that I bring the outstanding contributions of Christina Beach, Diana Himes, and Alicia Hayes, who have exemplified teamwork and dedication in supporting our self-contained special education program at Locust Grove Primary School. Christina Beach, stepping in as a long-term substitute, has embraced the challenges with commitment, fostering healthy relationships with students, fellow staff, service providers, and families. Her efforts, along with her teams, have gone beyond filling a vacancy, ensuring that our students' needs are met with compassion, intentionality, and care each day. Diana Himes and Alicia Hayes have also been instrumental, and to let you know, the two of those employees, Diana and Alicia, are IAs that support the teacher in the self-contained program. And they've been instrumental in supporting a nurturing environment for our students. Diana has completed her second year with Locust Grove Primary, bringing her many years of experience working with students to our students with special needs. Completing her first year with us, Alicia, sincerely showing compassion and flexibility to meet the students' needs throughout the day, has been truly an inspiration. Their combined efforts as a team has had, excuse me, a positive and lasting impact on our students, their families, and our school community. On behalf of the entire school, I extend my deepest gratitude to Christina, Diana, and Alicia for their hard work, their commitment, and passion for making a difference. And if I could, I'd like to share an anecdotal story. A young student from the classroom this year had never uttered the name of mom or mama off his lips, and around the winter break, this young man, this mother reached out to me and shared that for the first time, he heard mama come from his, her child's lips. And so, I can't imagine a more fitting and celebrating gift to have around Christmas time. So, wanted to share that with you, and that really comes from the combined efforts of the family who perseveres and works hard with service providers, the school system, and all those that work with this young man. So, we, I would just like to join, ask everyone to join me in giving everyone, or give each and every one of these folks a round of applause, so thank you.
Thank you all very much. If any of the folks who were recognized this evening, now's a good breaking point, so if you would like to make your way out and enjoy the rest of your evening. So, Mr. Sedano, that can be you guys as well. Feel free. Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you very much for the opportunity, and I turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you all very much. We'll give another round of applause. All right, moving on to public comments. I would like to open it for public comment. First of all, I would like to read, "The Orange County School Board recognizes the importance of maintaining a respectful and orderly environment during school board meetings. Therefore, we kindly request that all comments made are relevant to the field of pre-K through 12 public education and pertain to the matters concerning the school board and vision. We ask that individuals refrain from using offensive language, engaging in vulgar or profane behavior, or making comments or taking action that may incite violence or disrupt the peace. Unless otherwise authorized by the Chair, each speaker is allotted a maximum of three minutes to express their views. To uphold the quorum, we also kindly request that applause, noise-making, or any other disruptive behavior be avoided before, during, and after a member of the public addresses the board. It is important to note that public comment is intended for addressing the school board, and therefore, comments should be directly solely, directed solely towards the board members. Furthermore, it is expected that board members will refrain from engaging in dialogue with the speakers during this time. It is, as it is, an opportunity for the board to actively listen to the thoughts, concerns, and feedback of the public. Any conduct that violates established decorum and order as determined by the Chair or their designee may result in disciplinary actions, including potential expulsion from the meeting. Alternatively, written comments may be submitted to the board members via email. It is crucial to emphasize that these guidelines are not intended to restrict freedom of speech, but rather to ensure effective communication between the public and their public servants. We eagerly anticipate your valuable contributions and feedback. Thank you." Ms. Byram, start off.
Okay, and I'm going to call the speakers up three at a time. The first speaker is Dolores Darnell, and then we have Paul Moog and Kathleen Moog.
Good evening. My name is Dolores Darnell, 343 Yorktown Boulevard, Lake of the Woods, Locust Grove, Virginia. I want to tell you that I wholeheartedly agree with your decision to withdraw membership from the VSBA. This decision will not have negative consequence on anything related to academics, students, or teachers. The curriculum, well, the curriculum is based on state standards in the Code of Virginia and the Virginia Administrative Code. Curriculum development is best accomplished by education professionals at the local level and approved by the school board. Powers and duty in governance, well, those also are enumerated in the Code of Virginia. There should be no confusion about governance that VSBA would need to provide. Policies are based in law, so there's no need for samples. Parliamentary procedure is standard, so no need for interpretation by VSBA. The one conference that I found helpful when I was on the school board and attended it was the Legal Conference, and they reviewed lawsuits that were successful and unsuccessfully brought against school districts in the country. But this information can be delivered without paying dues and expensive travel to and from conferences. And any specific legal advice that you'd need anyway would be from an expert on school law who would represent you or give you advice aside from the VSBA dues. Local superintendents and boards can network freely with each body politic, as well as each individual legislator that represents us. No need to pay dues to an association. Superintendent searches can readily be accomplished by the board and clerk. It costs thousands of dollars through VSBA. In my eight years as a member of VSBA, I found the nonpartisan descriptor to be untrue then, and you all, if you've attended, should be able to attest to that currently. The Legislative Conference, whether it was at the state or the national level, was seemingly developed, and it was presented as talking points or lobbying points that were very partisan and largely had no benefit to excellence in education. In comparison and contrast to VSBA, I've been a member of professional healthcare associations, as well as healthcare industry and trade associations. In both emphasis, the, in both organizations, the emphasis was placed on my professional development, the pursuit of quality healthcare, and the provision of continuing education necessary for licensure renewals. There was no political leaning present there. So, for the above reasons, I do support your decision to withdraw from VSBA, and I'm happy to express that in public. Thank you.
Good evening, board, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to support your decision to leave the VSBA. Paul Moog, I live in Roseville, Virginia. Been here for five years. I'm the founder of the Virginia Citizens Defense League, which is Defense Gun Rights in Virginia. I'm currently the Director of the Virginia Gun Rights Task Force. One little-known fact is that the VSBA has been lobbying for gun control and using, as part of their leftist agenda, is pushing gun control. They want to have a traveling gun ban wherever the school boards, they want to be able to have school boards declare anywhere they meet be a gun-free zone, which is ridiculous. In general, I think this was a very sound decision, and as usual, we're hearing a really loud, noisy minority screaming and crying because of their personal dislikes of certain board members. I will note also that the, that the media coverage of this has been ridiculous, though I will say that the local paper is a fake news that literally does not exist anymore, yet they continue to put out stuff under this Orange County Review. The building is empty of any newspaper. There is no editor. There is nothing but sales. So, I think this is a joke that they continue to publish as the Orange County Review. I believe their personal attacks on Ms. Quinton are ridiculous and need to stop. I will note that they've tried to act like this is some Republican agenda, when they failed to go to the Democratic Committee webpage and note that the Democratic Committee is lobbying and telling people to come to this meeting and is supporting the two people who are opposed to this measure. So, if we want to make it political, it looks like the Democrats are the opposition. So, I keep carrying on, let's don't ignore the fake news. Ignore the noisy screamers who hate anything you do personally. Keep on, keep fighting to do what the parents in Orange County want, and you respect the democratic process. We have a majority who supports the decision. And I will note also, Mr. Rickett, I have bought much equipment at your store. I will not continue to buy it if you continue to do, support gun control and leftist organizations. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Kathleen Moog. I live in Roseville. I support the decision to withdraw from the VSBA. Thanks.
The next three speakers are Dave Davies, Sarah Jaeger, and Robert Eckert.
Good evening. Dave Davies, an Orange County taxpayer and resident. I live in Windy Lane in Locust Grove. I ought to express my dismay at the board's decision to leave the VSBA. For 42 years, I worked as a teacher and administrator. I served on a school board, and I'm now a professional consultant who does board governance training across the country. I'm not affiliated with the VSBA or any other similar association. The board's decision to withdraw from the VSBA is ill-conceived and puts the school division in legal and financial jeopardy. The quote from one of the board members that you were, quote, "not getting any use of the VSBA's services," end quote, says it all. Had you taken advantage of their nonpartisan, highly professional training, you would see how ill-informed this decision is. The VSBA has existed for 118 years, and virtually every school division in the Commonwealth is a member. The VSBA has years of guiding the boards. Their website is rich in resources, and they have experienced staff, including two Directors of Legal and Policy Services. One organization you're reportedly considering, the School Board Members Alliance, has no history, no policies, and is only about a year old. It was founded and is led by a woman whose racist social media posts cost her position on her school board and who, until recently, was registered as lobbyist, one of the criticisms you have of the VSBA. Before forming my opinion about the other organization you're reportedly considering, the Noah Webster Educational Foundation, I successfully completed one of their online courses, Introduction to School Boards. Even though this training is what I do for a living, I even have a certificate. I found the course and the foundation highly politicized and amateurish. Noah Webster makes no secret of their desire to push a political agenda. The VSBA, on the other hand, describes itself as nonpartisan. We now join only one other school division across the Commonwealth and not belonging to this statewide professional organization. As a matter of fact, a second district voted to leave, and when they came to their senses, they reversed their decision. This is not how I want to see my home district lead the way. The VSBA employs a full-time attorney who provides legal information and limited consultation for school board members and superintendents in divisions which are members of the VSBA Legal Assistance Fund. The School Board Members Alliance does not. What will that cost us? The fact that you advanced this action item under cover of darkness at a work session where public comment was not welcome says everything one needs to know about your process. Spotsylvania made national news last year for board dysfunction by ignoring best practices and doing things in a provincial way. Fortunately for our neighbors, they're turning their situation around. Orange County needs to learn from their lessons and reverse this foolish decision. Thank you.
I do not support the decision to leave the VSBA. At your May 20th meeting, the extremely partisan majority of this school board brought to a vote the decision to leave the truly nonpartisan VSBA via a coordinated plot of verbal deceit circumventing public comment. For a school board that claims increased transparency and speaking for its constituents, the extremists on this board deliberately silenced public voices before acting on their own political agendas. Chelsea Quinton, the gall you have for publicly stating this was a move to make our schools more nonpartisan is appalling. You ran for a nonpartisan position with your name under a political party. For a board that promotes fiscal responsibility, your decision to leave the VSBA will gravely impact our school district, and as a result, the education of Orange County children, including my own. This is a classic example of cutting off your nose, hurting our schools, to spite your face, punishing constituents who point out your agenda. Take Warren County's example as a warning. They left the VSBA in 2023. This fiscal year, they have paid over $160,000 in legal fees. Their original budget was $50,000. So far, they've had one policy and a paragraph drafted before severing ties with their legal firm over the exorbitant costs. For roughly $15,000 annually, the VSBA's legal team analyzes all legislation once, drafts model policies once, then sends them to all model policies once, then sends them to all partnering school boards to review and edit to their own preferences. In comparison, the only alternative to the VSBA, the School Board Member Alliance, or SBMA, may sound like a great deal on paper initially, but let's look at the facts. It was created about a year ago by controversial figure Sherry Story. Look her up. They have no lawyers on staff. They don't even have an official office. The VSBA has been around for 118 years. They help with superintendent searches, strategic planning services, give a discount for board docs, provide $50,000 worth of insurance for lawsuits filed against a school district. Lawsuits that surely will arise when this school board's poorly-guided policies invariably break state and federal law. We, the taxpayers, will be directly responsible for your unnecessary piecemealed legal fees. It really comes down to simple math. Currently, our school district has budgeted less than $40,000 in legal fees for the next fiscal year. Do we have over $120,000 to spare in our annual budget? Will three more full-time teaching positions be cut? The Board of Supervisors already denied your request for additional funding of superfluous administrative positions. Where will you beg, borrow, and steal from public education to cover these unnecessary legal fees? Look around you. Actually talk to the teachers and administrators in Orange County. Ask them how they feel about leaving the VSBA. Chelsea, Melissa, Darlene, you're in the wrong. Elections have consequences, and unfortunately, we are reaping what we have sown, but leaving the VSBA is a fiscally irresponsible decision.
My name's Bob Eckert. I live in Lake of the Woods. We moved here about 2011, and I have a son who got the Presidential Academic Achievement Award here in Orange County. Also have a daughter that finished high school here in Orange County, and she now attends George Mason. She got Graduated Mag, cum laude, and now she's on to get her master's degree. So I have two kids that really experienced Orange County, and I never seen any political pressures from the public school system. None, none whatsoever. I don't understand this move to remove yourself from the VSBA. I mean, when, early this year, you got, we got an email from the Board here. It says, "committed to open communication and transparency with the community and providing a collaborative and professional relationship." Does the way that you conducted this vote, does that constitute a good, transparent, collaborative relationship? I don't think so. I don't think so at all. No, you snuck it in. It was deceitful. It was slimy, and it was tricky. And I'm not going to call out any names individually, but it was slimy. I mean, you put the vote up, never mind, I'm not even going to go there. There were certain statements that were said in the press that said typically, the VSBA is not aligned with the rural districts of Orange. Rural districts? Certain districts in Orange are rural, but Lake of the Woods has 5,500 homes. Does that sound like it's rural community to you? Not to me. Not to me, not at all. You're not getting anything from $12,000? $12,000, is that what we're, that what we're, you know? We're fussing over $12,000? What's your salaries? What is your salaries up there? I mean, and $12,000? You're not going to get any value out of that, right? No. All the legal assistance and help and support that they support with the Board and how to run a Board? Obviously, some of you don't know how to run a Board. Seems to me, when you sneak a vote in at the very end like that, you're not supposed to do that. That's totally against all code. But we don't worry about code anymore, do we? We don't worry about ethics, any of that. Just push all that aside. I'm being careful. Sorry. Also, there's been statements about de-politicizing the school district. I mean, so you know, you know what's better more than all, most of the counties in the state of Virginia? You know what's better, right? Yeah.
The next three speakers are Sean Timmons, Leah Bradley Miller, and Kathy Bradley. Sean Timmons. Then we will move to Leah Miller.
Dear School Board Members and Superintendent Hornick, I firmly believe the Orange County School Board made a grave mistake when it voted to quit the Virginia School Board Association. I believe that the purpose for leaving was to advance a political agenda and that leaving will not benefit the students, teachers, and staff of the Orange County Public Schools. I am happily the proud parent of two Orange County students and a graduate of Orange County High School myself. I graduated in 2007, and I currently have a rising 16-year-old and 3-year-old who's in the Early Childhood Education Program. In my years of being an Orange County resident moving here at 13-years-old, I have never had a drag queen or any other kind of politically crazy agenda thrown at me as a student or a parent. It was absolutely disgusting seeing the recording of the last meeting and how this decision was made. It was clear that it was done in deceit. Firmly believe that this is part of a bigger plan for Christian nationalism, that three of our school board members are dumping on our school system. If I wanted my children to go to a religious school system, I would send them. I'm gravely disappointed, and I hope you guys do better.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Kathy Bradley. I'm her mother, but this isn't about she and I. This is about our children that have been weaponized for way too long. Standing by for the last 40-some years of being a parent or a grandparent, I've watched the destruction of children and the values installed in children. Children are afraid of nothing now. Children are just being destroyed because they, they are being guided by, they should be, there's two important groups, sorry. Most important are parents or guardians, and they're the ones that teach love and guidance and to be the best person they can be in their life. And then we have our teachers. Their job is to teach our children in ways that we people that are not educated to do so can fill their heads. Let them learn how to actually write a good paragraph, how to punctuate, how to add, subtract. Read. The American children have been weaponized long enough, and you need to leave children out of y'all's personal agendas. Evangelicals or whatever has no business in any school whatsoever, nor does any school have a right to tell a parent, "This is what we're going to do for your children, like it or not." I was a court reporter for 20 years, incurred nothing but felonies, including the General District Court. And I have seen the results of destruction of children, and it's just getting worse in its people, like some of you up here, that are doing it. And I can tell you right now with all my heart, y'all are evil people.
The next three speakers are Steve Keeler, Dwight Randy Squires, and Judy Peterson.
Good evening, Board, ladies and gentlemen. Superintendent Ms. Byron, excuse my voice tonight, I'm still recovering from pneumonia, but I thought it was important enough to come out here this evening. More than anything else, all I want to say is that I support your decision to leave the VSBA with wholeheartedness. And I really appreciate the fact that so many of you have reached out to the public to find out what they thought about it, and some haven't. But I support this thing wholeheartedly, like I said, and so does the RVCC, which is the Republican, I'm sorry, the Rural Virginia Conservative Coalition, definitely Republican. I ought to add another R in there. And we will endorse that on the website and on Facebook as well, because we do appreciate you very much. The other thing I wanted to say was very short. I am a huge advocate for CTE, and I was pushing for that during the election, and I pushed hard for a location to do that. However, I think it's your responsibility to make sure you're not spending taxpayer money foolishly. So while we have locations we can use that are currently built and ready to move into, I think we should use a little restraint in considering building another building someplace at this point. Thank you for your time.
Hello, Board Members. I'm Randy Squires. I've lived in the area for about 20 years, the rest of the time in northern Virginia, and I support fully the decision that you all made. I think something has been missing from the discussion tonight, and that is that you are the people that we elected to run this thing. So when you go to make a decision, you know, I support your decisions, and I, you know, if I don't want you, you know, there's other political people I could mention that I don't support their positions, but that, they got voted in, so I need to let them do what they need to do. And to say that you're doing it in secret is ridiculous. What is this meeting today? This isn't in secret, and everyone gets to speak, and I'm not qualified. I did look at the Virginia Board website, and it seems pretty political to me, reading it. You know, I don't have the detail. That first speaker was incredibly detailed. So I support you and what you're trying to do, and I think you are the ones that love the children. They've been destroyed by things like, "Let's take the Ten Commandments down," and "Let's let," you know, all these things that have happened in the last 30 years, and the schools and my children, you know, are suffering, and you guys are trying to stand up to it. I appreciate it. And I've been sued three times, and I defended myself because I was right. Please don't make comments.
I'm sorry, I was talking.
Well, please don't talk when I'm talking. I didn't talk when you're talking. So please, if you're sued, you shouldn't say, "Oh, I'm going to quit because I was sued." No, stand up for what is right. If you have, if you have expenses for a lawyer to fight a lawsuit, that's irrelevant. You shouldn't stop doing what you're doing because you're sued. That's ridiculous. Stand up for what's right and do what's best. I think you're doing a good job.
Hi, I'm Judy Peterson, a registered voter from District 2, and I do not support the recent action of the School Board to leave the VSBA. I sat here at your last meeting, right over here, and watched the process that was used to withdraw the Orange County schools from the VSBA. I watched minute by minute in shock as you just voted that night. No public comment because no discussion was allowed that night. This was a tragic action that will have repercussions for years to come, both fiscally and regard to policy. The vote was taken, and now our teachers, staff, administrators, and you have lost the ability to get assistance and consultation from the VSBA. Seeing how easily, and it was easy, you guys just went smooth through that at that last meeting, how easily this was accomplished by this Board and has left me, a retired Orange County teacher of 36 years, completely baffled. I worked on the Strategic Planning Action Plan last spring, worked hard to try to see that the schools could have good community relations, and now this. Now I can see clearly how by allowing the religious and political views of the three of you, Mrs. Quinteren, Mrs. Anderson, and Mrs. Dawson, to be part of our public school board, public school board, now I see how you are going to affect the education of Orange County's 4,800 children. I see what you're doing. I see how you're doing it. I see where you are going with your religious and political views. I see where you are taking this school system. And I'm appalled. I'm sorry. I just really am.
The next three speakers are Ellen Wessel, Marsha Landau, and Zach Burkett.
Good evening. I am Ellen Wessel, and I'm a District 1 voter. Add me, please, to the "against" column when you're counting the voices for and against withdrawing from the VSBA. Rather than debate its merits, however, I speak tonight in general opposition to the School Board majority's determination to impose a specific faction of religious ideology on Orange County public schools. I spent 12 and 1/2 years in the executive office at James Madison's Montpelier. I gained a deep appreciation for Madison's genius in setting up a government framework in which people from all walks of life could flourish. His bedrock belief in the separation of church and state was anchored in the conviction that freedom of conscience and religion is the foundation of a free society. I am also Jewish and raised with a different set of religious traditions and values. Nonetheless, or because of my shudder at the prospect of public schools making the Holy Bible or any specific religious doctrine the authority on public school curriculum. Parents have the right to choose homeschooling in private schools. They shouldn't have the right to dictate to other parents with children in the public schools. I'm not expecting a change of direction as long as District 1, 2, and 4 Board members remain the same, and I appreciate that elections have consequences. And while I will continue to pay attention, I am eager for the 2025 elections and different
My name is Marsha Landau, Unionville. It cannot be challenged that our School Board majority was legally elected by wide margins. You have a clear mandate to keep the promises you campaigned on, and thank you for keeping those promises on behalf of the students. We will not tolerate any more indoctrination. To the minority, we know you are upset, but we won and you lost. And because this is still America, you have the freedom of options. You can throw tantrums and threaten fantasy legal action. You can homeschool, you want me to smile? You can homeschool or use private schools. You might consider relocating to a community more in line with the views you hold, or you can find a way to deal with the majority in compromise. Regarding the Virginia School Board Association, what was their policy on allowing teachers to hide from parents the news that Suzie comes to school and announces she's now Billy? And what was their position when a boy wearing a skirt in another county raped a little girl in a school bathroom? As a practical matter, we pay $12,000 a year membership in VSBA that entitles us to pay even more to attend a training session or use any of their programs. Not to mention, with our membership, we are supporting ideologies that have nothing to do with educating children. Indoctrinating, maybe. The VSBA gets its marching orders from the powerful Teachers Union. You know, the one that shut down our schools, masked our kids, promotes CRT, DEI, and the transgender craze. They're the ones that believe parents concerned with their kids' education are terrorists and insisted the FBI investigate those who spoke up. The voters who put this Board in your seats acknowledge the majority for your courage and the hard work you and the hard work you do to fulfill your promises. Thank you, and God bless America.
I'm Zach Burkett. I live in Unionville. During the pandemic, I homeschooled students. I recently had the opportunity to react with another young student in Orange County schools. Exactly the same problems. So much for the pandemic excuse. The first and most important purpose of public education is to teach the basics, reading, math, English, history. We live in one of the most important and historic places in the world. Yet as far as I can see, our schools ignore it. Do you teach what happened at Leland Madison Park? Do you teach why it affects a student's life every day? If you do, you're doing a poor job of it, because I have yet to find a student who knows. Have you taught about General Kemper? Do you know about General Kemper? You should. He's an Orange County boy who, at great personal sacrifice, performed the first major pro-civil rights act after the Civil War. If you haven't bothered to learn your local history, are you educators or just clerks spewing the party line? Have you lost sight of what your job is? Those of us who object to your social engineering are often accused of being homophobic or worse. This is false. I would be equally against pole dancing classes taught in middle school. What might be appropriate in Northern Virginia is not appropriate in a public school in Orange County, Virginia. That's why I applaud leaving the VSBA. They seem to have lost their way the worst, and maybe we can get back to being an Orange County school. Lastly, the separation of church and state does not exist, is not in the Constitution. For those of you who can't or won't read, the Constitution says, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof." If you're going to quote it, use the full sentence.
The next three speakers are Kim Hoosier, Kate Allen, and DJ Anglin.
Good evening. I oppose the school board's decision to leave the VSBA. The VSBA is an important organization that helps the vast majority of public school systems around Virginia and provides necessary and useful tools. This board took this action without hearing from the public, which is in direct opposition to everything that many members of this board say that they publicly stand for. Publicly, members have continued to say that they want to hear from the constituents. They want to represent their constituents. However, making harmful decisions without hearing from your constituents is in complete opposition to what you say you want. In addition, members publicly say that they support free speech but have taken action to limit public comment. To say one thing and act in opposition to that is the pure definition of hypocrisy. One member stated that she wanted to leave the VSBA to take politics out of education. I find it very interesting that something is only deemed political when it does not adhere to her limited ideological views. The most recent action is a clear demonstration of how this board is only out to further their personal agendas while intentionally harming public school students. Boy, do I miss the days when the school board worked together to try to improve education for all public school students. The days when the board worked to pass budgets, improve curriculum, and address real issues that the school system faces. This board would rather not address the issues of racism, truancy, teacher retention and pay, test scores, and many other significant issues that our schools face. This board would rather continue to mislead the public, abuse their positions, misuse public resources, and act hypocritically. Leaving the VSBA delegitimizes public education and will end up weakening our schools and costing our county a lot of money. I am sure hardworking, tax-paying citizens will not appreciate the extra funds that have to be allocated because of your reckless decision to leave this organization. Moreover, we will continue to lose talented teachers. And most importantly, our students will suffer because of your undemocratic decisions. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kate Allen. I live on Ellisville Road at the edge of Orange. I'm here to tell you that I support your decision to exit the VSBA. After working in Fairfax County as a music teacher and teaching over 400 students a week, being the music coordinator for the Lake Braddock Pyramid, which was fairly large. I've worked in a metropolitan school system. I know what that's like, and I know what it's like to work in a rural system through Faukeer County. And then I moved here. So I support you. Stand firm. And I would ask that, as an example to our students and our kids, that the five of you stand under the umbrella together. I know what it's like to disagree with somebody. You don't agree with them. You don't like what they believe. But at some point, you have to just learn to get under the umbrella together and work it out. And I beg you to do that in a polite manner for the sake of our students. Second, and on a lighter note, a sports note. It came to my attention that our tennis teams, I believe the middle school and the high school, are having to go to Woodbury Forest School, which is in Madison County. And I believe that we're paying for that to play tennis, to have tennis matches. And I strongly disagree with that. And I hope that as you're looking at your budget, you're looking at the athletic department, please bring that to the forefront. We need to be having our kids on their own courts. It looks like there were new bleachers put in and concrete poured, and the courts are not playable. So please, put that at the front of your agenda. I pray for all five of you equally. Some of you know what my religious beliefs are, and there's nothing wrong with having faith. In Fairfax, I could have faith. My Muslim students could talk about their faith. So could my Jewish students. The pressures that I hear in this room in front of these people are way worse than what I ever heard in Fairfax County. There's nothing wrong with religion. And the three of you that were voted in, that everybody's screaming at, you got voted in. You won. So you're doing what we asked. And the two of you that are supposedly separate, I like you too. And I pray for you. And I want you guys to get it together. And I want you guys to work together. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the school board. Good to see you, Daniel Superintendent. I wanted to take the time to show my support for pulling out of the VSBA. That needed to happen. And I'm not quite sure what people in general are talking about when they said they didn't have an opportunity to speak, because I stood here, right here, at this podium, and said, "We needed to leave the VSBA." That was two meetings ago, if not three. So I don't know where the rest of them were. I mean, not paying attention because somebody didn't pick up the phone and call them and saying, "Hey, we need to go shake things up and get after those folks on the school board who are doing what the people who elected them to do asked them to do." Congratulations. I'm proud of you. Stand up. Keep doing it. The VSBA became too powerful. It controls too many counties, and it thinks it's untouchable. It shies away from FOIA requests. It has faced lawsuits from FOIA requests for the very issues you were talking about in reference to it being political or non-political. And school systems. A lot of school systems have a culture where even people who do have a different ideology, trust me, they don't talk about it with their colleagues because they get shunned. They get treated differently. I've worked in education. I've seen it. I know there are people who are like, "Nope, I keep my head down, do my job, teach my classes. I don't talk about other beliefs, and I don't try to fight with them when they do." They can hang their flags in their classrooms. They can put posters up in their classrooms and encourage students to attend events that may not be appropriate or their parents may not agree with. And it has happened in Orange County. I have three children who've attended Orange County schools, two who have graduated, one during COVID. And I know the VSBA didn't help during that. Not one bit. Because all they did was help push getting kids to where they're so far behind now, it's not even funny. Ultimately, everything they recommended hurt our education system. Getting out of that, that was a first-class act. It's what you should have done. Should have been done a long time ago. And I know change is hard. But bringing power back to the community, putting it where it actually belongs, not letting other groups make decisions for us in Richmond, that needs to change. I hope that y'all continue to represent your constituents, to do a good job. Like I said, I don't know where they were at, but I've spoke on this issue before, long before y'all made your vote. Hopefully, they'll wake up, start paying attention, and show up.
The next three speakers are Dawn Shelley, Duane Pugh, and Katie Pretty.
Dawn Shelley. Okay. Then we will move on to Mr. Pugh.
In case you're not aware, my name's Duane Pugh. Coming this August, I've been in Orange County for about 30 years. And during that time, I've worked very, very hard to hopefully build up a reputation where people believe I care about. All people, regardless of their social standing, their ethnicity, their skin color, or their belief system. I hope that's especially true of young people because of the 30 years, 23 have been spent being involved in the public school system. And so the only reason I reference that is so that you know that these comments, for your consideration, are coming from a heart that wants the best for everybody. One of the things I think you would all agree on that we would want in our public school system is respect for authority that would start at home and then would carry over into the school system where the authorities in the school system would be respected and obeyed. I think you all would agree that we don't want students that are lying to one another, to teachers, or to administration. I think also you would agree that we don't want children of any age in the school system looking at other people's tests and stealing answers or any other property that may not be theirs. You also probably would agree that you don't want violent acts in the school system and that you would want people to do unto others as they would want be done unto them. I think you would also agree that you don't want any negative, harmful sexual behavior to take place with the student population of Orange County. The reason I bring those things about is I think they're unifying, but they also find their basis in religion and faith. The idea that there is a moral authority that is greater than mankind. And in fact, the history of the United States, for the majority of the history of the United States, the Ten Commandments hung in our school systems and in our public buildings. But for the sake of argument, let's say that there is no higher power, no moral authority greater than mankind. So you have three options. One, you give one individual moral authority to set the standards for everybody else. We know from history that very quickly turns into a dictatorship where the person with the power makes the rules for everybody else, and it's self-serving. You go to the second option where you choose a select group of people who are supposedly wiser, smarter than everybody else, and give them the power to set the moral standards for society. And what you will have is groups fighting, infighting for the power to do so, because once again, they'll be trying to put their agendas on other people. Currently, the thought is that you give individuals, say, "You make up your own idea of what..." Oh, wow. Sorry if you're interested. Bring me back sometime. All right, bye.
Hello, my name is Katie Pretty. I live in the mine-run area. I'm having a Unionville address, but that's just the way it is around here. I'd like to say thank you to the current school board for their commitment in searching hard on this, how our money is spent here in the county. I am a hard-working taxpayer, and I appreciate that y'all are saving our county $12,000. I'd also like to say that I have married my high school sweetheart back in 1975. I'm the third, my family is the third generation here at Orange County in the school systems. And I just appreciate people who are thinking and trying to save money for we that live here. Thank you very much.
But it's okay for them to make a decision. This is all for you people. I told you I'm going to leave. Because I've never been such a group of idiots.
Ma'am. Ma'am.
You're ignorant, sacred.
Ma'am.
And y'all are evil. I'm Kathy Brown.
Thank you.
The next three speakers are Donna Pugh, Charlotte Wood, and Alan Daniel.
Mine's short. Can I bring my husband back to make the point? Anyway, good evening. My name is Donna Pugh, and I wholeheartedly support the recent vote to leave the Virginia State Board Association. I applaud the three who took that bold stand, the three who are more concerned about the education of our children instead of the indoctrination of our children here in Orange County. I would implore all five of the board members to major on the majors. The task of providing our children a top-notch education is staggering to hear the statistics of those who graduate from high school across this nation who can't even read. Can we start with what the old timers used to call the three Rs? The reading, the writing, the arithmetic? Can we do that? Can we get together and teach our children how to read, how to write? And can I include cursive writing? Whatever happened to that? They need to learn how to write cursive and math. I would also implore you on the board to stop attacking each other and work hard to attack the issues at hand. I appreciate all five of you. You were voted in our county, and I appreciate you doing your job. But like somebody said, please work together. We have wonderful teachers. I've had two that have been working, and it's hard work. I appreciate everyone that works so hard for this county. I was in sixth grade when I moved here from Georgia. I went to, started in Prospect Heights Middle School when it was up on Bellevue Avenue. I graduated in 1977. I graduated, four of my children graduated from Orange County High School. I have connections. I have lived here. Like I said, I was here since sixth grade. I moved away with my husband. He was a North Carolina boy. So we lived there for 14 years. But we have come back, been here for 30 years. And I am going to support you with everything in me. I don't have any skin in the game anymore in the school system, but I have so many friends. I have so many wonderful friends that work so hard in our school system, and I support them in every way. And I do pray for you, like someone else mentioned. You have a hard job, but I appreciate you. I appreciate you going out, running for this office, and you I appreciate you going out, running for this office, and you have been elected to this office. And we want, by the grace of God, you do the best job that you can. I appreciate every one of you.
Hello, my name is Charlotte Wood. I'm from District One. I've lived here 18 years and my son attends Orange County Public Schools. I oppose the board's decision to leave the V SBA. Because this matter was brought up for discussion and immediately voted on by the board without public comment, there was no process for the community stakeholders, parents, school employees, or constituents to research the pros and cons for maintaining affiliation of our division with the Virginia School Board Association. One of the board members mentioned that the deadline for renewal was May 31st and being that the next school board meeting was scheduled for June 3rd, it is quite suspicious that this agenda item was not presented until May 24th for discussion, then brought up for an immediate vote, knowing that constituents and stakeholders would have no say or could do nothing to stop this because the next board meeting would be held after the V SBA membership renewal deadline. Melissa Anderson said her constituents didn't care about membership in the V SBA, but I'm a constituent of District One, no one asked me, and I certainly do care. The school board is bamboozling its taxpayers not providing transparency. The V SBA helps divisions comply with state and federal laws. The V SBA states it operates as a nonpartisan association emphasizing a commitment to issues rather than political affiliations. Its unwavering stance centers around imposing any measures that compromise the autonomy of local school divisions, a position that has remained consistent throughout the association's 116-year history. I imagine the three particular members of the Orange County Board don't like how the V SBA's policies comply with state and federal laws. Our three particular members seem to prefer our students of 2024 and beyond live in the era of 1924, where students who identify as LGBTQ+ must remain in the closet where they are not seen or heard, where they must hide in fear of bullying, violence, and death; where minorities are expected a life of separate but not unequal; where critical thinking is something to be feared because how dare the individual think outside the box. This is not the Orange County our children are living in and certainly not the Orange County we should ever want to historically repeat. It appears the majority of this current school board wants to dismantle our school system as we know it. As a public school educator going on her 28th year, you are going to lose some qualified individuals and good luck finding other qualified educators to replace them. We are in a teacher shortage crisis. Any educator looking for employment searches the internet and investigates the district's school board. Why would a qualified educator who believes in an equal educator, education for all students want to work in a division where the school board, its leadership avoids transparency by bringing items up for discussion then immediately voting on them without public comment and interjects their own faith and political opinions into school policies that affect all students? As of last night, Orange County Public Schools is actively seeking to employ 31 teachers, two administrators, 10 instructional assistants, five specialists, and seven coaches. Next, the board will be wanting to disassociate from the V A, N E, and V O E. Why are you serving on our local school board if your desire is to wholeheartedly dismantle it? If this school board continues to run its meetings where votes are taken when items are only up for discussion, I am seriously concerned for upcoming policies. Don't turn Orange County Public Schools into a division where even our students are ashamed
Superintendent and school board, I'm here today to let you, the board, know that I do not support the decision to leave the V SBA. I also wanted to talk to the board about how it was done. I know some board members stated that this has been talked about for a while, but in my recollection, it has been mentioned during the first meeting in January and it was decided to talk about it later. It was mentioned like maybe one more other time in another meeting where it was decided to table it until time for renewal. There was not a lot of public conversation done about this, so I question, where did these conversations take place if it was not in the public's eye? Makes me question if there's been a quorum or a welcome quorum to push this partisan political goal. I would assume you would know what a welcome quorum is. If not, you should look it up. You don't have to be at the same place at the same time to have a quorum, but a quorum can be reached as information is passed between members of a public body like a school board. I want to, I also want the board to know that I find the way that it was brought up to be disingenuous and deceptive. When the person proposing the question asks the question in the affirmative, but then votes against the proposal that she brought up, brought forth, it makes it appear shady and like it was done with ill intent, underhanded, and intending to deceive. I cannot answer if that was the true intentions, but I can state the impression that it makes. Speaking of underhanded activities, it is very poor practice to bring up topics and vote on them during the same meeting without availability of public comment. I know Ms. Dawson, you said that you, it had been talked about over the past two years, but you were not on the board for two years, so you cannot gauge the public's opinion over those last two years. You know, you just know what your own echo chamber is saying to you. The board bringing up a topic and acting on it in the same work session before a public comment is available makes many of the public lose faith in the trust of the board. I objected to this behavior previously and my objection still stands. Voting on items at work sessions, especially topics that you know would be controversial is a poor practice at best. What happens when you sow seeds of distrust? We get a school board with meetings with over 30-plus people wanting to all share their opinions for or against. As I have stated before, you're wasting our time, resources, money on trivial things and you're not focusing on improving education. I do not, I do not agree with your decision to leave the V SBA.
The next three speakers are Laura Daniel, Kelsey Lawrence, and Teri Pace.
Good evening, school board and superintendent. First, before I begin, I actually want to address Ms. Anderson because at the beginning of this public comment, you made an announcement to the entire public that we should adhere to certain guidelines, yet you yourself violated that just a few speakers ago. You moved your mic towards your mouth and you gestured towards a speaker. How do we hold you accountable for your own actions when you violated the standards you put before us? Now, that I wasted 30 seconds out of a time that I wanted to speak to the rest of the school board, is that I stand before you as a parent and as a community member that I am against your decision to leave the V SBA. But once again, you guys are pushing your political agenda. No one else on the board is pushing their politics or their religion except for you three. Ironically, you have people come up here and stand and say that, oh, you represent the county. You don't represent the entire county. You do not represent their entire voices. In fact, I find it ironic that you three actually moved to the county and are not from here. So once again, you need to remember that you do not represent the entire county. You do not represent all voices. And all three of you guys are making this political. Not to mention, it was unethical what you did. And what was even more surprising was you, Ms. Dawson, that you allowed such a vote to go forth. That's even more disappointing because you were supposedly a teacher for a school district. How do we hold this board to their own conduct, their own ethical standards that they put forth? Because what I have seen, you guys are not. So how, we are urging, as a public, standing before you, urging you to hold yourselves to your own standards, quit adding politics to our education system. We have bigger issues that we need to address that you guys are wasting time on. And I stand before you again to ask, when are we going to address those issues? I have yet to hear an answer from you guys on that. When are we going to stop pushing religion? Because this is a public school system. You cannot push one religion. You have people of different faith, teachers, students, families of different faiths. You cannot push your faith. You can let it guide you, but you cannot push it on the entire public school system. I urge you to hold yourselves, have a conversation, have a conversation with yourself, with each other, to do better. Because I am disappointed in this school board and we have become the laughingstock
I'm here today as a concerned citizen and a mother from Warren County where our board made the regrettable decision to leave the V SBA last September. I'm here to share the first, the hard-earned lessons from our experience and to urge you to reconsider this decision for the sake of our children and our communities. Since leaving the V SBA, our district has faced a massive increase in legal fees. We had to turn to a private law firm where they charged us 14 grand for just one policy and a paragraph to rewrite. And that's just the beginning. We needed eight policies rewritten. You can imagine how quickly those costs add up, all at the expense of funds that could have been used directly for our students' education. I know there has been some talk among board members about joining the School Board Member Association. Let me be clear, this organization has no lawyers and bases its policies on the Bible. It was started by a disgraced and racist school board member from Suffolk County, Sherry Story. Those who can't, don't teach. They just go on to create an organization where school board members across the state pay for poorly-written policy. It's a joke, but unfortunately, it's a costly one. I also want to clarify that there is nothing wrong with religious beliefs and principles. The problem is when you use them to base law or policy from them. It most certainly opens you up to lawsuits. Can this county afford lawsuits? If not, you can just raise taxes, right? How many people here want their taxes raised because this school board chose to go with a bad organization that ended up getting them sued? We just had our taxes raised in Warren. And let me tell you, it's the quickest way to fill these boardrooms. And please don't take legal advice from someone who's been sued three times. You're playing with valuable tax-funded budgets. Don't light tax money on fire. Just because you were elected by a majority does not mean that you are not accountable to all of your constituents or that all your decisions are supported by the majority. You're not special. You only won because you are on the Republican sample ballot. Anyone can do that. The importance of being a legitimate school board association cannot be overstated. The V SBA provides critical legal experience, expertise, policy guidance, and training that are essential for running our schools effectively and lawfully. These resources are invaluable, especially in today's complex educational landscape. Without them, we are left vulnerable to legal missteps and inefficiencies that drain our resources and detract from our primary mission, educating our children. We've seen firsthand in Warren County how leaving the V SBA has created chaos and increased expenses. Our legal fees have skyrocketed and our ability to govern effectively has been compromised. This is not a path you want to go down. It's just, it's not just about the money, it's about maintaining a standard of excellence and accountability in our school system. We need to stand up for our children and ensure they receive the best education possible and that starts with being a part of a reputable school board association that provides the support and resources we need to succeed. Don't make the same mistake we did in Warren County. Learn from our, our mistake. Our children and our communities both deserve better.
I want to thank the school board for their very courageous decision to get out of the Virginia School Board Association. Also, I've been to many school board meetings and you do not have public, you always have public comments, so anybody can speak in the county that signs up on any topic that they wish to speak on. But I've certainly seen you vote on plenty of issues that there has been no public comment on. I don't think that Orange County right now can brag about the, about our students and what the, let's see, what do I want to say? I didn't write it down. The tools that they have when they graduate. I think that they are very lacking, as many people have said. And our school board is not to be about any agenda. It is not to be about the sexualization, which is a big deal in the Orange County public school systems, and that needs to stop immediately. So I hope the school board will do something about that. We certainly don't need a gay straight alliance club that many parents don't even know that their children are in. So I don't think we need any, I don't think we need a heterosexual club either. I don't think we need any sexualization of our children. And I hope that this school board will make sure that academic excellence, which is what your job is supposed to be about, not agendas, not, not trying to steer kids one way or another, but to make sure that when they graduate, they are proficient in reading, writing, and arithmetic, that they have self-discipline and self-worth and are able to direct themselves in a way that they will be successful in life. Those are the skills that our school system is supposed to be developing in our students, not agendas. And I think that this gives you the opportunity to make sure that our students can pursue those, those skills and those avenues without an agenda. So I'm, I'm very grateful for your courage and I look forward to a school board that really puts forward academic excellence for our students, excellence in sports and the arts, and excellence in accountability.
And since our last group is four speakers, I'll just call them all at the same time. It's Bobby Pace, Tom Coyne, Cameron Hamilton, and Karen Hamilton.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'm here tonight to thank you and commend you for your decision to leave the V SBA. What I'm thinking after hearing all this discussion from, find people on this side and find people on this side, that I'm thinking it's a very positive move and I think it's a courageous move. And I think over time, when the positive aspects all come out, that the two members of this board who were not, couldn't bring themselves to agree with this decision, will probably agree with it sometime in the near future. And I think they will be very proud to have been on this board at the time that this decision was made. I think that this is going to be an example for other school districts in this state to follow, and I think they will. And if not, and it turns out to be a dismal failure, and by the way, it has been talked about, I've been coming to school board meetings for the last three years, and Mr. Anglin is exactly right, other than it's been talked about more than two years, it's been closer to three. But in any event, I'm guessing that if it doesn't turn out to be a positive thing, that with all these smart people up here and these smart people here and these smart people, this organization will let us come crawling back on our knees and say, we're sorry, we made a mistake, and everything will be hunky-dory. But thank you very much again.
Good evening, board. My name is Tom Coyne. I'm from Unionville. I just want to stand here and say thank you for your vote. I know there's people that disagree with you and agree with you, but I'll stand behind this board 100%. Hopefully, you make the right decision on all the efforts that you guys put into it. And thank you very much. I do want to make one comment that I wish every meeting that was filled, as many people was here tonight, because last month, there was nobody here and I was here. So I wish every meeting, if, if there's something going on, fine, show up. If there's nothing going on, fine, show up. But that way, you find out what's going on, you can tell your neighbors and your friends. Thank you, and again, you have my support 100%.
Good evening, school board. Good evening, Madam Chair and all the members here. A lot of rhetoric being thrown around here, a lot of differing opinions. I think that the United States has a rich history of debate and skillful arguments about a variety of different topics. I want to make it very clear, those of us that support a removal or withdrawal of the V B S A, don't think anything poorly about you, Jack, or you, Sandy. I think you're fine people. I know you, Jack, a little bit. Sandy, you and I don't really know each other very well, but I've heard wonderful things about you. I think we need to remind ourselves that what's the goal and the purpose of withdrawing from the V B S A? I think the concern here is that the upholding of parental rights in the schools. I think there is legitimate concern and criticism over perhaps many members of the Board of Directors of the V B S A or how the V B S A has, in the mind of many, imposed impotence and/or restrictions on advocating for further transparency within the school systems. That's also a legitimate concern. To those that share the concern that by withdrawal, the V B S A would somehow promote this Christian nationalism in our schools, you couldn't be further from the truth. It's the argument simply that they want to keep politics out of the institution of our schools and the belief that the V B S A might perhaps have undue influence because of their restrictive policies on school openings or things of that matter, or even some of the mass mandates which they took from many other organizations. Either way, I think for many of the parents here, again, I'm a father, I'm a husband, I am a man of faith as well. I want to see our students excel. I pay, I pay county taxes, I pay for the school systems, although my kids don't go to school. That's what's really at stake here, and that's what people are concerned about, that perhaps by remaining a part of the V B S A, there may be impediments in that eventual success. So I know it's a controversial matter, but I want to remind everyone to strip out the rhetoric, strip out the politics from these arguments, and let's look at it substantively. I think any legislative action or any action by an elected body such as yourselves to put further power back in the hands of the parents, to ensure that there's engagement and dialogue, is one that I will advocate and support for. I believe that's what's being achieved here. Thank you for your time, thank you for your professionalism. God bless you all.
Well, he's definitely the better speaker. I have to read something. My name is Karen Hamilton, and I'm a resident of Orange County and a mother of three. I would like to say thank you and communicate my strong support for the school board on their vote to leave the V S B A. I'm confused by some of the comments that this board is making decisions based on personal, political, or religious decisions. It's actually quite the opposite. This decision is a step away from politics, getting politics out of education, and I very much appreciate that. We have vastly different opinions in this room. I think we all agree, we want politics out of education, we want our kids to learn the basics so they can be successful in their future. I appreciate you guys taking that step. I hope that you can work together in unity to address some of the issues that may come from this decision. But I trust that you guys have looked ahead into that, and I can see just from the way you've communicated on your personal school board pages that you have looked into that. I appreciate the research that you've done. I say, "Stand firm." We appreciate you, and we know that you're doing the job that we've asked you to do. I appreciate each and every one of you. I know you have the students' best interests at heart, and I hope that you guys can move forward in unity for the success for the children. Thank you.
All right, I will make public comment close. All right, moving on to minutes and financial reports.
Real quick, before everybody...
Board member comments, let's get through these first.
I don't want everyone to leave. Hold on just for a second. Real quick. I want to thank everybody for coming. I think first and foremost, the one thing I want to say, there is no one evil on this board. There is no one evil on this board. It does not exist. It is very... I listen to a lot of the citizens that I know quite well, that have lived here for a long time. I also have lived here a long time. I'm getting a little choked up, because most of y'all are my neighbors, and then you're the... you know, Mr. Pace talked about fine people, and then we're divided on something here. It is discouraging, very much so. That being said, I voted against us leaving the V S B A. And I don't do social media, I don't do a lot of public speaking, because I ran for office with the trust of the people of District Three to do the best job I possibly can with all the information that I have. I would like to... Ms. Dornellis, stand it up on the back first. I'll say, "It was eight years? Eight years. Thank you for your service, eight years. I remember when you were on the board." My question is a little bit of what she talked about as the very first speaker. What is the alternative to leaving the V S B A? I did not hear that from anyone. What is the alternative? Is the V S B A perfect? Nope, not even close. I don't understand why we run from a fight. Why just cancel it? Why just get out? That's why I voted no. I am extremely concerned about our legal expenses, which some of you heard a little bit about from some of our speakers. I don't know if that's going to be the case, but we will find out. We will find out, and we will find out quickly. But for those that wanted to leave the V S B A, I wanted to be... there are things that need to be improved in the V S B A, no question about it. That being said, I would have been the one standing beside you to fight against the things that we need to change in the V S B A. And instead, we just left. So now we're on an island by ourself, and the individual came from Warren County, so there are two of us out of 132 school divisions. So we will all see what happens. I will stop there and thank everybody again for all of your time here today, and it was good to see a lot of you I haven't seen in quite some time. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Minutes and financial reports. Do I have a motion? To approve?
Move to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on, monthly operating bills.
I move to approve the May 2024 operating bills in the amount of $5,666,963.78.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, the meeting calendar, sorry, moving on. Skipping around on me here. Is there any questions or changes to the school board meeting calendar? Or would somebody have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the 2024-25 school board meeting calendar.
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And over to you, Dr. Horne.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Justin, we'll start with Mr. Sarver first. He has some information regarding our bus purchase for the upcoming year. Justin, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Horneck, Madam Chair, members of the board. I come this evening to initiate an annual process involving the purchase of seven school buses. About six years ago, we moved to a process where they're purchased through our capital budget through the county versus our operating budget. We do this through a municipal lease. We have selected a three-year term, and it's allowed us to stabilize our fleet over the course of time. We've requested proposals, and I come tonight with a proposal from First National Bank of Charlottesville at the rate of 4.7% over a three-year term. The next step would be to fill out an application, get some additional details, and figure out the details for underwriting purposes. There may be some additional steps as the board as far as resolutions or different levels of approval, but I wanted to get the information out for you this evening for consideration for next meeting. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. And next, we will have Dr. Wolfrey, Dr. Haniker, and Ms. Ailer come forward for a presentation of our federal grant applications.
Good evening, Dr. Horneck, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tonight, we're presenting information related to our annual federal grant applications. This includes Title I, II, III, and IV, and ultimately, we are requesting the board's approval to submit those grant applications for the coming school year. So to begin, I'd like to go over just the timeline. We submit those after the request and approval to the board. We submit our plans or applications to the V D O E in July. They give us feedback, we make any revisions that are suggested, and then in the fall, we receive our initial allocations for those grants. Our reimbursements are then processed through the course of the year after the approved expenditures are made. The first of those grants, for each of these tonight, you'll see an amount associated with those, and that's based on our initial allocation from last year. The amount that we receive this year may be different. So the first of those is Title I, and that grant is awarded to our schools with high percentages of disadvantaged students. Currently, we serve four schools with that grant. Those funds are primarily used for staffing, for example, our reading specialists, as well as professional development and instructional materials for students. In addition, we also use those funds for homeless students and students who are in foster care. And now, Dr. Haniker is going to share information about Title II and Title III.
Thank you, Judy. Good evening. Our Title II grant is another one of the grants that we request your approval to apply for every year. Title II is used for teacher professional development. It is also used to help us pay for teachers licensing, licensure, things like that. It also funds our... partially funds our math specialist, our literacy coordinator, our math coordinator, and our instructional specialist, because they provide professional development to all of our teachers. And the next grant is the Title III grant. It's a very small grant, but it works to support our E L L students. It mostly goes to help pay for the cost of an E L L tutor to help our students become more efficient in the acquisition of the English language. And that's the Title II and III, and now Susan's going to talk about IV.
And Title IV is broken down into three areas that we... based on our allocation, we have to actually indicate how much we're going to spend on each of the areas. So the first is access and opportunities for a well-rounded education for all of our students, supporting school conditions for student learning in order to create a healthy and safe school environment, and access to personalized learning experiences supported by technology and professional development for the effective use of data and technology. So again, this year, we will be asking that the funds be used to support our STEM curriculum. It is actually a program that's purchased through Title IV each year, and professional development for our teachers who aren't familiar with the program, a staff-student support coach, and outpatient counseling services for our students who qualify and the families that we work with. Any questions?
Yes, thank you. I'm just wondering, does the district contribute any of our state or local funding to these programs, or are they standalone with the federal funding that we've received?
For Title IV, for the most part, it is standalone. Sometimes, when it comes to the salary and benefits, like I was saying, we have to actually spend a certain percentage on each of the categories. So if one doesn't quite, you know, cover all of the expenses, sometimes there is some supplemental money used from other budgets to offset the costs.
Okay, thank you.
But I'll let Judy and Renee can talk about their programs.
Title II, we have our local match to that, so we do contribute money. Like I said, it was partial salaries and benefits, and then also for the professional development, we have local professional development money as well. And then Title III, as you can see, that's a very small grant. So yes, we do have local E L L funds that we supplement.
So it's local categorical funds that are able to be applied? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just add that for Title I, those funds are used to supplement, so those schools still receive their percentage based on their staffing and their student population. So this funding is supplemental to our state and local funding.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Anything else?
Madam Chair, would you inject a motion on this, the federal grant applications?
Absolutely.
Speak in your mind, please.
I move to approve these grant applications as presented.
I would second that motion.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank all three of you for all your hard work, as always. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Horneck. Moving on, board member comments, future agenda items. We'll start with that. If there's anything anybody would like to add.
I would just like to thank you for putting this item on the agenda, I appreciate it. I think, in my view, I had requested this, and this would be something that we could talk about, and as we're talking about it, we might want to say, "Okay, let's look into this, bringing this item back." And that way, there's no confusion relative to public comment or the issue being brought up. We get enough time for board members and the public to be available to prepare and make thoughtful, informed decisions. So to me, it was just, again, a structure, and I appreciate you adding that to the agenda. So thank you.
Move on to...
Madam Chair, sorry, I just want to make sure everybody was on. I agree, but I also want to highlight that it's important to note that as the agendas are being prepared, other things might come up. So there might be things that are not discussed during future agenda items that will ultimately end up on the agenda, just by nature of the business. But I do agree, I think that's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I would like to request that we have discussion at the next board meeting regarding the Legislative Committee that will be held on June 20th. I would welcome discussion on what you all would like to see moving forward with our Legislative Committee, any priorities or anything to present to our local legislators.
Moving on to board member comments, is there any additional items that we would have?
I would just like to say thank you to the members of the public that were present tonight and expressed their concern and their opinions. I don't remember who it was that said we need to work together, and I want to make sure that you understand, my commitment is to our students and the education of those students, and our teachers and parents. And I obviously have some disagreements with some beliefs within the different board members here, but I absolutely support working together and commit to work together with all of these board members to the best of our ability to try to make good, informed, supportive, positive decisions for our students and their families, and our teachers and our staff. So I know we had a little bit of a bump here. I will continue to speak out if I have concerns that things are not being done in a transparent manner, but I really do appreciate the opportunity to work with you, and I want to keep going forward in that positive manner. So thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, I wanted to thank Jack for his comments earlier. I do agree that as a board, I think this is the best functioning board that we've had in the last two and a half years. I appreciate working together. We all have differences of opinions, you know, not one of us have voted, you know, entirely with one another. And I think that it's important to have all opinions brought to the table. That's why it's a board decision and not an individual dictatorship. With respect to a lot of the comments that were coming, at least in my direction tonight, you know, if I'm convicted of being a Christian, then I'm doing a good job. Not once have I proselytized from this dais. The issues that many take are with my personal life and my walk with Jesus. And not once have I brought this to this table. And my faith will continue to guide me, but I do not want any agendas or indoctrinations. I ran on education, not indoctrination, and I will continue to do so. With that, Madam Chair, I appreciate working with each and every one of you. Though we have differences of opinions, I think that we do work well together, and I certainly appreciate that from all of you.
Thank you. Jack, anything? Jack's quiet. Thank you all for coming tonight. We really appreciate all of your comments and concerns, and again, we are here for the children. You know, if there's something that we can all agree on, it is that. We do have differences of opinion, or our differences of how we get there, but we're all aiming for the same destination. So again, thank you, and we will move to closed session certification. Ms. Dawson?
I make a motion pursuant to 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia to have the Orange County School Board convene a closed meeting for the following. School Board convene a closed meeting for the following: Discussion of Personnel or the Performance of a Division Employee as Authorized by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia for Resignation, Termination, Transfer, Employment, Salary Adjustment, Evaluation, and Retirement of Employees and the Superintendent's Contract. Also, Discussion of Pupil Personnel as Authorized by Section 2.2-3711A2 for Waiver of Compulsory Attendance.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. We're in closed session.[634.82]
Thank you guys. I just want to like it down.
This is the...
Should I give you the other one? No, I don't have the other one. It's on here.
I had it open, but I closed it. I don't know if I can get back in there quickly enough or not, since I always forget my password.
I put it in my phone. I almost forgot where I put it.
There you go. Thank you. You're quicker than me.
All right. I would like to call this meeting back to order. May I have closed session certification?
Whereas the Orange County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Orange County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
This byroom have roll call?
Second.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Dawson?
Aye.
Ms. Harrington?
Aye.
Mrs. Quinturne?
Aye.
Mr. Rickett?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the clerk certifies the vote as follows: five yes votes, no no votes. The resolution is approved by a five to zero vote.
Dr. Horneck, deposition of personnel actions.
Yes ma'am, recommend approval of the personnel actions as presented in closed session.
Yes ma'am, recommend approval of the personnel actions as presented in closed session.
I make a motion that we recommend approval of the personnel agenda to include resignation, employment, transfer, salary adjustment, summer school, extracurricular coaching appointments, and the superintendent's contract.
You have a second?
I second.
Are we... did you need the other portion?
Do we need both of them or do them separately?
For the pupil personnel, we do it separately.
Separately. All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Deposition of pupil personnel actions.
Yes ma'am, recommend approval of our... of the pupil actions as presented in closed session.
I move to approve the verified unit of credit waiver request as presented.
You have a second? All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
And if that's everything, I'm adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.